Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Karazie, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Amadis.
Here.
Mrs. Buckley.
Here.
Dr. Campbell. Mrs. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Means.
Present.
Mr. Rose.
Here.
Mrs. Rule.
Here.
Mr. Spicuzza. Mr. Sustich.
Here.
There's seven members present.
And I just wanted to announce for the record that Dr. Campbell is at disaster training this evening, as well as Mr. Spicuzza is tied up with work. Last week, the Bethel Park Board of School Directors approved a new contract between the school district and the Bethel Park Custodial Maintenance Educational Support Personnel Association, which is effective from July 1st, 2011, through June 30th, 2016. This bargaining unit covers our 33 custodians and five maintenance employees. As we have done with the previous contracts that have been approved, we have invited the leadership of the custodial maintenance staff to be present with us as we officially sign the agreement in front of the public. I want to take this opportunity to thank our school custodians and maintenance employees for the outstanding job they do day in and day out. The condition of our schools and grounds are oftentimes the first impression for our visitors, and it is essential that they stay in top condition, not only for our visitors, but also for our students and our staff. On many occasions, yours is a behind-the-scenes job, but to those of us who spend a great deal of time in our buildings, we know the effort you put in, especially on days we have snow or there is an emergency situation. We thank you for your diligence. We also appreciate your continued professionalism throughout the negotiating process and value your commitment to the school district. We know these are not easy times in education, and the things we used to be able to give to our employees in terms of compensation and benefits are not easily affordable to us anymore. We appreciate your understanding of the economic realities of today. I also want to note that this group accepted a one-year wage freeze this year, and we greatly appreciate this concession. We look forward to continuing to work with you as our valued partners in education. Will Raymond Blossage and his negotiating team join Mr. Howard and I at the table for the signing of the contract?
My mother would like to check that time.
And we also hope that Mr. Campbell sent you with a certificate of more appreciation.
I have to go back to work, guys.
It is my pleasure this evening to welcome Bethel Park High School Physics teacher Clyde Quokk to our meeting. This past April, he was named one of 39 semifinalists for the 2013 Pennsylvania Teacher of the Year, which means he is the fifth Bethel Park teacher since 2007 to reach at least the semifinal level. He joins 2012 finalist Bethel Park High School English teacher Christopher Jack, 2010 semifinalist William Penn 4th Grade teacher Catherine Caston, 2009 finalist Bethel Park High School English teacher Charles Youngs, and 2008 semifinalist retired William Penn kindergarten teacher and current board member Cindy Buckley. This is becoming a Bethel Park tradition. Mr. Quokk, you are in good company on this list, and the district is extremely proud of the work you do day in and day out in your classroom. We are pleased that you are now recognized as one of the best and brightest in the state. It is my understanding that you are not among the 12 finalists, but that certainly does not minimize your accomplishments at all. In fact, all that means is we get to add another bone of contention to the list of issues we have with the state. I would ask the audience to please join me in congratulating Bethel Park High School Physics teacher Clyde Quokk for this outstanding achievement.
Definitely want to thank my cheering section. 110 students and my four favorites showed up. Now, I have to thank God for this because without him, I wouldn't be a teacher today, and he's the reason I got into this profession. I had a distinct calling six years ago, and that's why I'm here. And I need to thank Nancy Rose for taking a chance and hiring me. I had no teaching experience when she hired me. I don't know if I told her that, but... I didn't need it, apparently, to get to as far as I did. And it's been a wonderful ride here at Bethel ever since. I really need to thank Dr. Jan Sante and Charles Youngs for nominating me. I didn't think I was ready for something like this or even deserved something like this, but they saw something more in me than I saw in myself, so thank you all.
Wonderful. Congratulations again. And it doesn't stop there. The local task force on the right to education annually recognizes students, teachers, and school districts for providing outstanding support of children who are receiving special education services in Allegheny County. Each year, the task force puts out a call for nominations, and this year, one of our teachers was selected to receive the Scott E. Fulmer Memorial Step Award in the teacher category. This year's recipient is Franklin Elementary School Special Education teacher Jennifer Kaminsky, who was presented with the award at a special dinner on May 2nd at Keystone Oaks High School. Much like the tradition the district has with the Pennsylvania Teacher of the Year program, Bethel Park is also establishing a mini-tradition with the Step Award, as Ms. Kaminsky is the second teacher in the past three years to receive this award, following in the footsteps of retired Neil Armstrong Middle School Special Education teacher Jean Harrington, who received this award in 2010. The Bethel Park School District prides itself on our commitment to caring for the educational needs of all of our students, and is especially gratifying when a teacher of our special needs students is recognized for going above and beyond to make sure her students are working to their fullest potential. At this time, please join me in congratulating Franklin Special Education teacher Jennifer Kaminsky, the 2012 Step Award winner.
Vicky Flota told me I didn't have to talk, so I'm very upset with her right now. I just want to say thank you. I grew up in Bethel and went to school here all 12 years. And I'm glad to be back as a staff member. And I was meant to do this, teach kids with autism, and I hope to continue doing it for the next 20-some years. I'm not trying to give away my age, so I'm just going to keep it at that. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations. After listening to the well-thought-out rationale and a respectful presentation from the leadership of the Bethel Park High School Class of 2012, Dr. Jan Sante felt it best to reverse the district's original intentions to hold graduation in the new gymnasium in favor of holding it outside one last time at Bethel Park Stadium, weather permitting. While we believe the new gymnasium provides enough seating to comfortably hold future graduation ceremonies indoors, we felt it was important to make an exception for this group of seniors, who not only had to move out of their old high school mid-year into the new building, but also to watch their old school be demolished before their eyes. This allows them to participate in one final connection to their past. The board and administration supports Dr. Jan Sante's recommendation to hold graduation for the Bethel Park High School Class of 2012 outside, weather permitting, on Saturday, June 16th. Moving forward, it is our intention to move graduation inside, but for this year, we will maintain the past practice of holding an outdoor graduation ceremony. However, if the weather negatively impacts an outdoor ceremony, graduation will be moved into the gymnasium. Because we will now be focusing the bulk of our resources on planning for an outdoor ceremony, should graduation need to be moved indoors, it will not have all of the technological and decorative bells and whistles it would have if we were planning for only the indoor event. But as always, when weather forces a change of venue, we are committed to making graduation a memorable event, regardless of the location. On that note, let's continue to hope for sunny skies on June 16th. We look forward to seeing everyone at the Bethel Park Stadium on Saturday, June 16th, at 10:00 a.m., and we look forward to a new practice of an indoor graduation, beginning with the Class of 2013. I need an intent to adopt the agenda for business items.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 7-0. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of April 19th, 2012.
Moved and approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 7-0. I need to announce executive sessions held on May 15th, 2012, for personnel other legal matters and to receive information, and May 24th, 2012, for personnel other legal matters and to receive information. Staff report and Dr. Stark.
And it is my pleasure to be the one to bring you so much good news this evening from Bethel Park. Congratulations to Bethel Park High School senior Lizzie Nolan, who once again had a piece of her artwork selected as the winner of Congressman Tim Murphy's 2012 Congressional Art Award. Lizzie's charcoal sketch called "Hand Study" was chosen from work submitted by 32 students from 16 high schools in Congressman Murphy's district by a panel of judges who are local artists. Lizzie's piece will hang for one year in the United States Capitol, along with the other pieces of artwork that were selected as winners in congressional districts across the country. She will attend the grand opening of this year's exhibit in Washington, DC, in June. When Lizzie was a sophomore, her pencil drawings of actress Helena Bonham Carter was selected as the 2010 Congressional Art Show winner. Lizzie plans to study design at Carnegie Mellon University next fall. Thirteen of our high school Latin students were recently recognized for their outstanding scores on national Latin exams. Congratulations to medalist Jared Single, Dan Snyder, Vinnie Tavoletti, and Emily Shangarulo. And certificate winners Jenna Smetana, Aditya Karishna Shan, Jessica Walker, Julie Buchwald, Emily Davidson, Megan Douds, Christian Hokai, Keith Powell, and Emily Kucan. The Steel Center area vocational technical school named six of our high school students the top of the shop for the second semester of the school year and presented them with certificates in recognition of their outstanding conduct, attendance, proficiency in coursework, and professionalism. Congratulations to Antol Amadis, Tyler Boxheimer, James Hammerly, Casey Provident, Ryan Shahn, and Zach Yulakovic. Congratulations to Bethel Park High School senior Dan Snyder, who earned $1,000 as the top scorer in the Westinghouse Science Honors Institute's annual exam. Dan competed against 246 other area high school juniors in this two-hour exam, which is given at the end of the Science Honors Institute's 10-week lecture series. Also among the top 26 scores on the exam was junior Matt Ennis, who received a $50 Best Buy gift card. Additionally, Dan, Matt, and classmates Rebecca Hoffman, Vincent Mamon, Caitlin Michael, Divya Raghu, Rachel Taylor, and Rachel Wida received participation certificates from Westinghouse for participating in this prestigious program, which exposes students to careers in science and engineering. Two of our high school German students won't be attending Bethel Park High School next year because they will be living and studying in Germany thanks to a Congress-BundesStog Youth Exchange Scholarship. Congratulations to junior Kristi Ennis and sophomore Kevin Fleischman, who were awarded these scholarships after a lengthy and rigorous selection process. Both students will spend next year living with a German family and attending a secondary school in Germany, with their expenses being paid jointly by the United States and German governments. They are among a group of former BPHS German students to earn this award. The Bethel Park High School Music Department had a successful spring music trip to Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, returning home with 15 awards, including nine first-place superior ratings, two first-place excellent ratings, a Best Accompanist Award, two Best Overall Awards, and the Esprit de Corps Award. Congratulations to our students and staff for keeping the Bethel Park tradition of music excellence alive. The Bethel Park Athletic Department held a reception to congratulate the 20 senior athletes who received scholarships to continue their athletic careers in college. Congratulations to Megan Baylog, Hillary Boxheimer, Brian Brewst, Adam Dodson, Michael Dunlap, Emily Iben, Jordan Hayes, Autumn Held, Brian Holland, Aaron La Paglia, Shannon Marsteller, Megan McMayen, Kelsey Matheny, Kyle Miller, Mallory Mutsler, Ben Nolan, Christian Riley, Evan Schweitzer, Matthew Spiegel, and Ryan Thorson. Two Bethel Park High School juniors, who were former students of retired Memorial 1st Grade teacher Dottie Kennedy, wanted to do something to remember their former teacher, who passed away this spring. They organized a themed-day dress-up week at Memorial and raised over $1,100 for the American Cancer Society, which they donated in Mrs. Kennedy's memory. Thanks to Alexa Roth and Megan McLendon for their efforts to memorialize a special teacher in a special way. Three Bethel Park High School students competed at the state level of the Pennsylvania Junior Academy of Science on the Penn State campus, and all three of them brought home first-place awards for their research projects. Congratulations to Will Amend, Jared Single, and Molly Graham for their outstanding research. Three Independence Middle School students also competed at the state Pennsylvania Junior Academy of Science and earned two first-place awards and one third-place award. Congratulations to first-place winners Emily Augustine and Billy DePudaloff, and to Christian Smetana for his third-place award. For the second consecutive year, a team of Independence Middle School students earned the Best Portfolio Award at the National Fluid Power Challenge. They competed against teams from 25 area schools in this competition to build a hydraulic device, which would allow them to lift as many blocks as possible in two minutes. Their portfolio documented their research and science behind the work. Congratulations to Billy DePudaloff, Amanda Hokai, Macy McKittrick, and Christian Smetana for their outstanding efforts. Keep up the good work. Two teams of Independence Middle School gifted students entered a project proposal into the NASA Glenn Wing Contest, and both proposals were selected. One team studied the cohesion and adhesion properties of water, and the other team studied the amplitude and wavelength properties of waves in a microgravity environment. Both teams came up with their ideas, wrote the procedures, designed and built the apparatus for their experiment, and wrote their proposals. They shipped their apparatus to NASA, where they were used in NASA's microgravity chamber to test the students' hypotheses. Congratulations to these budding scientists. A group of Neil Armstrong middle school students, who call themselves the NAMs Needlers, recently used their needlework skills to make dolls to send to children in Haiti. Besides making the Needlepoint dolls, the students also designed and sewed tie-dye dresses for the toys. Thanks to Gabriella Como, Michaela Crum, Krista Hammerly, Jenna Crowboth, Courtney Geddis, Cassidy Kelly, and Tori Slawinski for their generosity to bring a smile to a needy child. Sixth graders on Neil Armstrong's Team Eclipse collected 172 jars of peanut butter and 155 jars of jelly and worked with the Greater Pittsburgh Food Bank to donate them to the South Hills Interfaith Ministries, to help to feed the hungry in the South Hills area. Besides packing up PB and J, the students also wrote notes of care and designed placemats and lunch bags to accompany their food donations. A group of 4th graders in Ms. Caston's room at William Penn recently spent their recess time working outside to beautify the grounds at Penn. They volunteered their time to weed and mulch the flower beds in front of the school while learning the importance of teamwork and cooperation. Thank you to Juliana Carbone, Madison Sermonara, Lindsay Hegidis, Carson Longanett, Carly Mamon, Lauren Mazacone, Marley Murphy, Shaili Scovran, Haley Vincent, and Lily Zemazinski. And that concludes our report for this evening.
And you're learning lots of new names, aren't you? Thank you, Dr. Stark. Student Government.
Hi, everyone. I'd like to start off by saying I'm Sidney Craig, and next year, I will be the school board's senior representative. And I'd like to introduce you all to Angela Sanctus, and she will be our junior school board rep for next year. And her brother Mike Sanctus was one of our school board reps last year. And so we just want to congratulate her on her new position. And recently, in student government, we had our staff appreciation week, and that went over really well. We had a really nice cookout for them on Friday, and throughout the week, we gave them all little gifts, and we had students send them cards and flowers. And all of the staff received a flower, and they really appreciated that. And we also had them wear ribbons to represent how many years they have been working at the school, and they all really liked that. And also, recently, we're just tying up the end of the year, going over everything that we've done this year and trying to plan out for next year. And we're already starting to work on things for next year. We've met with our new executive board, and we're having another meetup with them to get them all introduced to student government and what we do. So we're really excited for what's going to come for next year. Thank you.
Thank you. PTA, PTO Council. Anybody here from council? And Solicitor's Report, I believe he just passed out a written report, correct? Written report, correct?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, okay. And did we have any committee... I don't think we had any committee meetings to report on.
No, but I just have one announcement. Next Tuesday, May 29th, we will have a Facilities Committee meeting, and it will be a voting meeting, or could be a voting meeting, at 6:30, and on the agenda will be discussion on field lights, on the new fields.
Thank you.
Next Tuesday, May 29th, at 6:30.
Public comments on agenda items only. Anyone commenting on agenda items this evening?
My name is Terry Thomas. I live at 23 Woodbridge Drive. And since you brought up the high school graduation.
Okay, now, you can speak on that at the end. We don't have any agenda items that we'll be voting on regarding high school graduation. Anybody for agenda items? Things we will be voting on, on the agenda. That was done prior to the calling of the business part of the meeting. We did presentations. Then we'll move into business items, Curriculum Committee, and Mrs. Buckley.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. We have two items under curriculum this evening. Would anyone like any of those pulled? Hearing none, I move, under Curriculum, item number one, independent studies, and item number two, conference attendance.
Second.
Items one and two under Curriculum Committee have been moved by Mrs. Buckley and seconded by Mr. Sustich. Any questions or comments on either of these items? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry 7-0. Personnel Committee and Mrs. Rule.
There are nine items under Personnel. Are there any that anyone would like to have held out? If not, I move item one, approval of substitutes. Item two, approval of extra-duty responsibility program. Three, acceptance of resignation. Four, approval of leaves of absence. Five, appointment of personnel. Six, approval of summer help for custodial maintenance. Approval of elementary summer data secretary. Approval of 2012 Extended School Year Program. Nine, approval of staffing change.
Second.
Items one through nine under Personnel have been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Amadis. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry 7-0. Facilities and Services Committee and Mr. Sustich.
There are five items under Facilities and Services. Would like any items held out? Hearing none, I'd like to move the following items. Item number one, water line repair at the high school stadium for a total amount of $15,504.69. Item number two, the purchase of an irrigator for the new high school athletic fields in the amount of $8,150. Number three, purchase of carpeting for Independence Middle School in the amount of $58,669. Item number four, purchase of a 4-inch post-rotary lift for the bus garage in the amount of $7,300. And item number five, approval of change order for the high school project. And there are four items. Change order CM008 to Northwest Interior Systems for the amount of $6,366. Change order EL021 to Calista Electric in the amount of $8,758. Change order TE012 to Westmoreland Electric in the amount of $13,539.56. And change order SV001 to Simplex Grinnell in the amount of $105.
Second.
Items one through five under Facilities and Services Committee have been moved by Mr. Sustich and seconded by Mr. Rose. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry 7-0. Finance Committee and Mr. Rose.
There are six items under Finance Committee agenda this evening. Anybody like any held out separately? I move the approval of item number one, May 2012 salaries and bills. Item number two, April 2012 financial report. Item three, approval of student services contract. Item four, PSP membership dues renewal by Pathfinder School Administrative Budget. And number six, request to seek bid.
Second.
Items one through six under Finance Committee have been moved by Mr. Rose and seconded by Mr. Sustich. Any questions or comments on any of these items?
Done.
Mr. Rose.
Just a quick comment on item number five, the Pathfinder School Administrative Budget. The budget's for $297,500, but there is no requirement or request for funds from the membership districts. And at 16 years in a row, we've been doing that.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any other questions or comments on items under Finance? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry 7-0. Mr. Amadis, would you please take other for me this evening?
I will, yes. Under other, we have two items. Would anybody want any of those held out? Hearing none. Hearing none, I-
I think the one is just an announcement of the second reading, so I think you're just moving really the first one, correct?
Thank you.
I think they should have made that a little clearer.
Correct, because it's the second of three readings.
Right.
I move the approval of number one, which is the approval of release and settlement agreement.
Second.
Item one under other has been moved by Mr. Amadis and seconded by Mr. Rose. All in favor of this item, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That item carries seven to zero.
Just want to announce that number two would be the second reading of the policy 913.2, which is the commercial advertising on school property or website.
And that item is on the website, and we did make a couple corrections to it from the first reading with input from the board on that. Board, and I think public, so that's the second reading for that one. Now we're to public comments on anything.
My name is Terry Thomas. I live at 23 Woodbridge Drive. And I want to applaud the School Board, first of all, for allowing the graduation to be outside this year, barring inclement weather. But the picking of any given class for the citizens that vote everybody into office, who have students in the school district, and saying, okay, next year, no more tradition, no more rite of passage, no more what the citizens want. You're all now coming inside, and I've heard all kinds of reasons tonight for the reason to do so. My oldest will be 32 this year. This will be my fourth child next year to graduate. And, you know, you hear about, oh, well, we could have a problem with this, we could have a problem with that, blah, 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 blah. Okay. We can have problems walking out the door here tonight and go into your car, you could get knocked over the head, and that could be the end of it. I think the citizens, the students, who have worked hard and want to celebrate this because it is a rite of passage, it is a celebration. Celebrations and rites of passages and tradition do not end in 2012. My student, 2013, has the same right to have this. And I think if you want to try out the gym, which was something I heard today, try it out on inclement weather, and then see how people like it. But don't just blatantly take away something that these kids look forward to as they graduate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Marla Vaughn. I'm the valedictorian of the class of 2012, and I live on 5850 Southampton Drive.
My name is Tristan Slater. I am the co-author of the letter with Marla that we submitted to upon Mrs. Rose's suggestion, and I'm 109 Panett Street.
Hi, my name is Angelina Hurley. I'm the Student Government President at Bethel Park High School, and I live at 6180 Irish Town Road Extension.
We just want to publicly thank the School Board and Dr. J for listening to our input and for your continued support. Thank you.
Congratulations on being the valedictorian, by the way.
I'm Gus Oakley, 329 Allen Dale Drive, Bethel Park. Having been involved in a number of the graduations, I remember one time having to go inside in '79, and it had to be the worst graduation that I think Bethel ever had. But for the most part, when we did it outside, we did it, and we did it correctly. To me, we are one of the schools that other schools look up to because we do it quickly and diligently, and it is a nice presentation when the kids come from the other side of the stadium in and take their seat. To me, the community, the citizens, are the ones that want it outside. Just because the principal decided on doing it inside, I don't think you, as a School Board, should sit there and say, okay, next year, we'll do it inside. Just as the lady said, you have inclement weather, you can try it inside. But to go and take it away from the what, the tradition that we have had in this school district for as long as I can remember, I think is very foolish. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Steve Stossel. I want you guys to put a name with property. I've made the unfortunate decision about two and a half years ago to move into Bethel Park, and I received the most unwelcome of welcome wagon gifts by you guys, with the first thing I got was a, before I even knew what my taxes were, was a notice of appeal by the district on me and my property. I've talked to some of my neighbors, they've received the same thing, so I guess I'm going to have to go through with it. But then I got about six or seven solicitations from lawyers wanting to represent me. I didn't feel I needed a lawyer, and I wanted to go to the hearing, but I didn't make it, so your lawyer pretty much had full reign at the hearing at the County Board of Appeals. Couple months later, I got a letter, final decision. Okay, this is the market value of my house, these are the taxes I'm going to pay. I didn't know how little the finality was of that decision, because apparently you weren't happy with it, because subsequent year, you appealed it again. Now I'm mad. I go to the hearing. I don't need a lawyer. I don't take a lawyer. I've never hired a lawyer or used a lawyer in my life. How did I move to such a place? Is this America? So I go to this hearing, it gets suspended because I don't have the tact, as you can see, to talk in front of people. But anyways, they have to bring police officers and all this, so we have a rescheduled hearing. We go down there, I have my say. I didn't bring a lawyer to fight your lawyer. That's what you want. You want a lawyer to talk to your lawyer, to make some kind of negotiations. But I figured you're going to do whatever you want to do anyways in Allegheny County. Couple months later, before Thanksgiving, I get a final decision. Figure it's all over now. Unfortunately, they sided with me. So the next course for you people is to take me to court. So now, after buying a new property in your township, paying $6,400 a year in school taxes, plus 5%, .5% of my salary, anyways, I put 20% down on a house. I got a mortgage of $1,395, principal and interest. I'm putting away $900 more a month to live here in Bethel Park. Is there something wrong with that? 65% on top of my principal and interest just to live here? And you're not happy with that? You're not satisfied with that? Now I have to go to court on June 5th for another go-round of this. And on top of it all, your lawyer was seeking to increase my property value by $30,000. We got the new court-ordered Allegheny County assessments. Now, my assessment is $41,000 more than what it was. It's also $11,000 more than what your lawyer was seeking, but you're appealing that too. What, what, what do you want from me? This is the most unhospitable place on earth. It has to be. How could you put a new property owner, new revenue, there's dirt there, all the trials and tribulations of building a house in the middle of the Depression, and just like my neighbors, we know we can't sell our houses for what we paid for, yet you want, you want more blood. You don't want 6,400, you want 7,000. And you're willing to pay thousands of dollars to lawyers to seek this? It just boggles my mind. I know you had a nice meeting here, and there was a lot of congratulations from people, and great to them, but I came here to just put a property, there is a face, there's somebody you've, I've had no restful night sleeps since I lived here.
Mr. Stossel, your time's up.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
And how could you win? There's ordered two decisions made.
Sir?
One, we're ammunition to ID.
And Boardly Ashland Drive. I want to say something positive. I thought all the awards tonight were outstanding, and the things that are going on in this school district are truly wonderful. I also want to comment, Mr. Adam has made a recommendation last week about the band uniforms, and how many years did we have them, and could we assess students? And I still don't know how many years the band uniforms last, and I certainly support the band bottom of my heart, but maybe we could think of a rental for the uniforms each year and put that money in a separate fund, and at least we'd have some money when the uniforms had to be replaced. I miss Mr. Schubel, because he always told us about the sports thing, and I would just like to commend the Bethel Park baseball team, who I thought had a very good year this year. And I know they didn't have their coach in place immediately, but they rallied, and I thought they did an outstanding job this year. With regard to the high school graduation, I just read an editorial in the Almanac about it. I hate to end on a negative note, but I think all of this could have been handled in a better way now, after we read the Almanac, we're going to graduate outside, and I think that's great. I heard the only thing that the outdoor graduation had going for it was tradition. That's what graduation is. It's a tradition. And unless we have water on the field or bulldozers on the field, I don't know why we decided to go inside. It's a wonderful, beautiful tradition. Families can go there in any number that the students want to invite, and I think that the recommendation that it continue, it should be considered, and not just ended this year. For whatever discussions you had, the public wasn't privy to those discussions. All of a sudden, we heard it was going to be inside. It's an important part of the community, and I think before we make a decision that it's over this year, we should look at it again. It just wasn't handled in the best way this year, and I'm not blaming anybody, but let's learn from that and try to do a better job of considering the tradition of the community for all the years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll move into Board comments then. I knew I would forget, where did I start last time? Mr. Amadis, do you want to start this time?
Thank you, I have no comments this evening.
Okay.
Just a simple one. Graduation is coming up. Outdoors, no rain. And I ain't even going to say the other word, it's outdoors. I'm looking forward to being there, handing out diplomas. It is, it is tradition, it's something we do every year, and since we don't get to say it then, I'll say it up front here. Congratulations to all the seniors, and I only see a handful of them out there, but good luck to everybody. Let's go.
Thank you, Mrs. Rule.
I'd just like to say that the Board did tour Steel Center, got their first opportunity to go through, and I think it'd probably be best a year for somebody that did the tour, just what their thoughts were. We had an excellent reception from Kevin Rice, who is the director, and really gave us a lot of things to think about. But Dawn, is there anyone down there that might want to comment on the tour?
I think too that we're going to have our highest enrollment there this coming year, so that says a lot for it as well. Does anybody want to comment on what they saw in the tour?
I'd like to say that personally, I was very impressed with what I saw, and I hope that we have more students that will attend.
I think there are a lot of wonderful programs there. The cosmetology program is outstanding, and what you would pay, and Mrs. Rule can attest to that, into that program if you weren't getting it through the high school. Yeah, that's outstanding. Thank you. Mr. Rose.
There is a graduation indoors in the gym tomorrow at Pathfinder School. Classes are smaller, but it's quite, quite a, quite an event. I, sorry, I won't be able to make it this year, but it's, it's worth going to. Congratulations to Bethel's graduating class this year, and to all those students that we saw on that screen tonight. Absolutely just outstanding. Thank you.
Mrs. Buckley.
Mr. Rose just said everything I was going to say. Good choice.
You just say ditto then.
Yes. I'd like to again congratulate the class, and enjoy your last few weeks of school, and have fun at graduation. Thank you.
Pretty much the same for me. I'd like to congratulate all the people that had all those outstanding achievements. It's always interesting to look through that list and actually know some of them. And I'd also like to congratulate, congratulate the graduating seniors, so that's it.
Thank you. And we do, as a Board, the decisions that are at the school level, we try to leave them at the school level. We don't want to micromanage and overstep and, and reverse our principals' decisions. I believe Dr. J saw that you presented, as I said in my statement, a rationale behind what you were requesting, that you weren't a class that had a full year in the new high school, that you would be the last class graduating out of the campus style, and thus the stadium was, and I want to commend you for your respectfulness throughout the proceedings, even with your Facebook page, and keeping people to making kinder comments than I'm sure what some people may have wanted to do. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.
And it is my pleasure to be the one to bring you so much good news this evening from Bethel Park. Congratulations to Bethel Park High School senior Lizzie Nolan, who once again had a piece of her artwork selected as the winner of Congressman Tim Murphy's 2012 Congressional Art Award. Lizzie's charcoal sketch called Hand Study was chosen from work submitted by 32 students from 16 high schools in Congressman Murphy's District by a panel of judges who are local artists. Lizzie's piece will hang for one year in the United States Capitol, along with the other pieces of artwork that were selected as winners in congressional districts across the country. She will attend the grand opening of this year's exhibit in Washington DC in June. When Lizzie was a sophomore, her pencil drawings of actress Helena Bonham Carter was selected as the 2010 Congressional Art Show winner. Lizzie plans to study design at Carnegie Mellon University next fall. Thirteen of our high school Latin students were recently recognized for their outstanding scores on national Latin exams. Congratulations to medalist Jared Single, Dan Snyder, Vinnie Taboletti, and Emily Sharon Shangarulo. And certificate winners Jenna Smetana, Aditya Karishna Shan, Jessica Walker, Julie Buchwald, Emily Davidson, Megan Dowd, Christian Hokai, Keith Powell, and Emily Kucan. The Steel Center Area Vocational Technical School named six of our high school students the top of the shop for the second semester of the school year, and presented them with certificates in recognition of their outstanding conduct, attendance, proficiency in coursework, and professionalism. Congratulations to Antal Amadis, Tyler Boxheimer, James Hammerly, Casey Provident, Ryan Shahn, and Zach Yulakovic. Congratulations to Bethel Park High School senior Dan Snyder, who earned $1,000 as the top scorer in the Westinghouse Science Honors Institute's annual exam. Dan competed against 246 other area high school juniors in this two-hour exam, which is given at the end of the Science Honors Institute's 10-week lecture series. Also among the top 26 scorers on the exam was junior Matt Ennis, who received a $50 Best Buy Gifts card. Additionally, Dan, Matt, and classmates Rebecca Hoffman, Vincent Mamon, Caitlin Michael, Divya Raghu, Rachel Taylor, and Rachel Weida received participation certificates from Westinghouse for participating in this prestigious program which exposes students to careers in science and engineering. Two of our high school German students won't be attending Bethel Park High School next year because they will be living and studying in Germany thanks to a Congress-BundesStog Youth Exchange Scholarship. Congratulations to junior Christie Ennis and sophomore Kevin Fleischman, who were awarded these scholarships- these scholarships after a lengthy and rigorous selection process. Both students will spend next year living with a German family and attending a secondary school in Germany, with their expenses being paid jointly by the United States and German governments. They are among a group of former BPHS German students to earn this award. The Bethel Park High School Music Department had a successful spring music trip to Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, returning home with fifteen awards, including nine first-place superior ratings, two first-place excellent ratings, a best accompanist award, two best overall awards, and the Esprit de Corps award. Congratulations to our students and staff for keeping the Bethel Park tradition of music excellence alive. The Bethel Park Athletic Department held a reception to congratulate the twenty senior athletes who received scholarships to continue their athletic careers in college. Congratulations to Megan Baylog, Hillary Boxheimer, Brian Brewst, Adam Dodson, Michael Dunlap, Emily Iben, Jordan Hayes, Autumn Held, Brian Holland, Aaron La Paglia, Shannon Marsdeller, Megan McMayen, Kelsey Matheny, Kyle Miller, Mallory Mutsler, Ben Nolan, Christian Riley, Evan Schweitzer, Matthew Spiegel, and Ryan Thorson. Two Bethel Park High School juniors, who were former students of retired Memorial first-grade teacher Dottie Kennedy, wanted to do something to remember their former teacher who passed away this spring. They organized a themed day dress-up week at Memorial, and raised over eleven-hundred dollars for the American Cancer Society, which they donated in Mrs. Kennedy's memory, thanks to Alexa Roth and Megan McLendon for their efforts to memorialize a special teacher in a special way. Three Bethel Park High School students competed at the state level of the Pennsylvania Junior Academy of Science on the Penn State campus, and all three of them brought home first-place awards for their research projects. Congratulations to Will Amend, Jared Single, and Molly Graham for their outstanding research. Three independent middle school students also competed at the state Pennsylvania Junior Academy of Science, and earned two first-place awards and one third-place award. Congratulations to first-place winners Emily Augustine and Billy De Pudeloff, and to Christian Smetana for his third-place award. For the second consecutive year, a team of independent middle school students earned the Best Portfolio Award at the National Fluid Power Challenge. They competed against teams from twenty-five area schools in this competition to build a hydraulic device, which would allow them to lift as many blocks as possible in two minutes. Their portfolio documented their research and science behind the work. Congratulations to Billy De Pudeloff, Amanda Hokai, Macy McKittrick, and Christian Smetana for their outstanding efforts. Keep up the good work. Two teams of independent middle school gifted students entered a project proposal into the NASA Glenn Wing Contest, and both proposals were selected. One team studied the cohesion and adhesion properties of water, and the other team studied the amplitude and wavelength properties of waves in a microgravity environment. Both teams came up with their ideas, wrote the procedures, designed and built the apparatus for their experiment, and wrote their proposals. They shipped their apparatus to NASA, where they were used in NASA's microgravity chamber to test the students' hypotheses. Congratulations to these budding scientists. A group of Neil Armstrong middle school students, who call themselves the NAMs Needlers, recently used their needlework skills to make dolls to send to children in Haiti. Besides making the Needlepoint dolls, the students also designed and sewed tie-dye dresses for the toys. Thanks to Gabriella Como, Michaela Crum, Krista Hammerly, Jenna Crowboth, Courtney Geddes, Cassidy Kelly, and Tori Slawinski for their generosity to bring a smile to a needy child. Sixth graders on Neil Armstrong's Team Eclipse collected one hundred and seventy-two jars of peanut butter and one hundred and fifty-five jars of jelly, and worked with the Greater Pittsburgh Food Bank to donate them to the South Hills Interfaith Ministries, to help to feed the hungry in the South Hills area. Besides packing up PB and J, the students also wrote notes of care and designed placemats and lunch bags to accompany their food donations. A group of fourth graders in Ms. Caston's room at William Penn recently spent their recess time working outside to beautify the grounds at Penn. They volunteered their time to weed and mulch the flower beds in front of the school while learning the importance of teamwork and cooperation. Thank you to Juliana Carbone, Madison Sermonara, Lindsay Hegedis, Carson Longanett, Carly Mamon, Lauren Mazacone, Marley Murphy, Shaylee Scovran, Haley Vincent, and Lily Zemenzinsky. And that concludes our report for this evening.